That's fine. If we can record it and post it after the fact, that's fine.
Um, oh, there we go. I didn't hear any sirens. Do we know where Wayne's at? And then he turned around once this air. Send him a picture of us smiling with masks on.
Well, we should have done in the basement like.
Jeff, if you're watching.
All right. Well, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll call the meeting to order at seven twenty-one P M. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Madam clerk, could I have a roll call, please?
Ma'am.
Here.
Trustee Berkshire is absent. Trustee Delapena.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Thank you so much. We'll move to presentation of the prepared agenda. Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment to item nine A to reflect this will be a continuation of the public hearing from our prior meeting?
I'm moved.
For a second? Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 I suppose nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none, that motion passes. We'll move to village board public comment. Anyone wishing to provide comment on a topic or an agenda item may address the village board during our public comment or hearing segments by either submitting comments in advance or attending the meeting. Is there anyone that wishes to make a public comment at this time? Seeing none, and madam clerk, we had received none in advance, correct? All right, we'll move on to official and staff's report. Undermine, I have two matters for consideration. I'd first ask for the board to make a motion to, or at least at last for a concurment of the board for the reappointment of Dana Eckert to the zoning board of appeals for a term to end July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Is there any objection to that? Thank you. And then I'll ask for concurment from the board to reappoint Beth Keller Stein to the planning and zoning commission for a term to end January first, twenty twenty-three. Is there any objection to that from the board?
No.
Seeing none, thank you so much. Other than that, I just would like to congratulate and thank the Lions Club for a well put together case for Roselle. I think the festivities went very well, and it was great to see everyone out again in the village. So appreciate the time and staff put into that. I know that's considerable for the police, fire, and other individuals, as well as I know a lot of you had put in a lot of sweat equity yourself, be it near trains or the bingo tent and whatnot. So appreciate everyone's involvement in that as well. So we'll move to village trustees. Any trustee have a report tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to village clerk. Welcome back. Village attorney? Thank you. Village administrator?
No report.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we, under unfinished business, will move to the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, or non-controversial in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There's no discussion of these items. Tonight, we have a presentation approval of the village board minutes of July twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Authorize the village administrator to approve the purchase of a backup and data recovery solution for the village's information technology in the amount of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Adopt a resolution authorized the mayor to sign and direct the village clerk to attest to an amendment, amended purchase and sales agreement for the real estate and dedication of a permit easement between the village of Roselle and J E A North Point LLC, and then adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for the twenty-twenty-one Parkway Tree planting project in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Again.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I suppose nay. Any abstentions? Seeing none, that motion carries. And let the record reflect that we have trustee documents.
Yeah, well, when I saw the news saying that the tornado was around Wayne, I took it personally.
We'll move to our regular agenda tonight, and we'll start with community development in the absence of trustee Berkshire. Trustee Trejo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to continue the public hearing for the annexation of five, five, six Lincoln Street.
And could you check your mics on or put a little closer? Okay. Thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, staff, Jason, do you want to kick us off tonight? Under extraordinary circumstances of tonight.
All my help is currently not here. So obviously, this is a continuation from the last board meeting regarding the annexation for five, five, six Lincoln. The property owner's here, and at that time, the board wanted staff to go back to get more information or confirm or validate kind of the estimate for the sidewalk installation. Staff did do that and basically confirmed that the original estimate is the best that we believe the village can estimate the construction to be at the kind of prevailing wage municipal cost. What a private contractor would cost is not something the village is able to do, given kind of how we're required to bid out projects. And why I raise that is some of the board knows kind of the past conversations around pre-annexations that took place a handful of years ago was to really get at the heart of kind of this issue, which was at the time, different boards agreed to different terms and conditions and annexation agreements. That, as a result, things were inconsistent. Some people coming in said, hey, I like the terms in that agreement better. I want that in mind. So staff and the board worked through a pretty comprehensive process, and the result of it was adopting an article in the code regarding pre-annexation agreements, terms, and conditions that really explicitly stated out the parameters for pre-annexation agreements. And sidewalks was really at the heart of much of those discussions. And that code says, and I kind of summarized, that the property went annex shall install public sidewalks in accordance with village code, including all work necessary to make ready the area for the sidewalk installation no later than six months from the date of the adoption of the annexation agreement. If weather conditions make that impossible, then they have to provide a bond in the amount of one hundred and ten percent, in which time then they'll be allowed to install the sidewalk at a later time. So why I bring up the private cost of installing a sidewalk would really have to be determined by the homeowner. They'd have to get estimates and try to see what that cost would be. So it could be lower than that twelve thousand dollar estimate that staff provided. As we always do with quotes, we overestimate at times, and that may be the case there with some unknowns. And we're kind of bidding it like it was our project. It could very well be the property owner's private project to figure out what the cost would be. So I don't know what that twelve thousand dollar number could be. So short of any other questions of me by the board, and David, if there's anything else you want me to talk to related to this agenda item and sort of the sidewalks?
So I think right now, what I would just throw out there, and I want to get a pulse of everyone, is really, we have three options on the table here. We can either approve this as is tonight, which would be the full amount listed. We could either approve the full amount and allow for a payment plan to occur, which may or may not be impacted by our prior board direction to come up with a grant program. Or we're talking about amending exactly what Jason just discussed, in which case, we're going to probably, well, I will ask for a motion to continue this to the next board meeting, and I would like to hear what the board's direction would be towards this policy to help inform staff on what amendments should be brought forth to the next agenda for consideration, because we would have to do them in tandem, since there's no item on the agenda today to actually consider that tonight. So I'll start from the easiest question probably to the hardest, and just ask real quick from the board. Does anyone today believe that we should do the full amount as proposed in the original paper? That would be the twelve thousand. So I've got one.
I'll just, I, yeah. I mean, I'm totally supportive of continuing this. I mean, if they could get a better price, then I'm fine with letting them get that better price. But if not, I think consistent with their ordinances, it would be the full twelve thousand.
So your preference would be?
My preference would be continuing and give them the opportunity.
Okay.
But I just want to say, like, I would be on board with the twelve-six if their quotes came in higher.
And mayor, if I can just clarify, or just, so if the board were to say amend the annexation agreement that's before them tonight that says the owners agree to pay to the village the amount of X, you could amend it to say the homeowner agrees to install a sidewalk at their cost within six months and take dollar figures out of it. I'm not certain that we as staff want to take thirteen thousand dollars and necessarily go do the sidewalk. It may again be on their best app, you know, to just. So I just wanted to make that as, I guess, as an option instead of
Yeah, absolutely.
Talking about a dollar figure, it might just be more of who do you feel should be responsible for doing the work, the homeowner versus the village? Because right now, by code, it is on the property owner to install it, and there's really no mention of a dollar figure paid to the village. Just wanted to kind of clarify that.
Absolutely. No, that was good clarification, because, yeah, then I would say we should just continue it then. If it's the property owners, they should be going and getting that quote in our code right now is what you're saying.
When you continue it, you're going to need to consider amending the current ordinance as written to allow for the property owner to pay for it.
It'd be a stipulation that we'd have to go back and revise. So if that helps, it starts direction to help know what we're trying to do. So I think Cheryl, were you?
No, what I was going to say is I'd like to hear from the property owners, because I, you know, every, every time we're continuing it, they're coming back, and it's just, and I'm going for them, and I want to see if what kind of hardship it's causing them for this entire delays.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you, I assume you guys are the property owners, correct? Do you, would you guys like to come up to the podium and just kind of give your perspective on the situation, or? You don't want to, you don't have to.
You brave the rain, you might as well, you know.
Um, so I mean, part of the hardship, at least for me to be here, is that I'm a mental health provider, so I'm canceling patients to keep them. So that's difficult. And then it's been difficult. I mean, the figures have gone down before. Two weeks ago, it was
Just under five thousand?
Now we're back to twelve. And certainly, if we were directed to get a quote, we would have, but we've never been directed that way. The sidewalks have been an issue. I don't think anybody would argue that. So.
It's a significant amount more money.
Yeah.
I understand the procedural pieces of it, I'm not blind to that part, but that's a pretty huge discrepancy from what you first discussed, what the village thought to what they might do now. That's come to a bit of a shock to both of us. So financially, a bit of a kick in the stomach, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So I guess, I think one of the matters at hand that we need to consider is whether it's physically the village who has to do it, which comes with certain regulatory obligations, such as paying prevailing wage and other things like that, that you as a private resident don't need to worry about doing. If we were to give you a deadline in order to make the installations and be inspected, and you would be responsible for kind of engaging with your own, you know, private contractors, or if you did the work to code yourself and had it approved, between those two options, you know, dollar, like, I can't tell you how much it would be on your end, if this is based on our estimate and our end at least, do you have a preference, or do you feel you could, within a reasonable amount of time, fulfill that kind of obligation?
I think it depends on what we're using.
And the S and S one thing, it's also August, so installation could be a problem going into winter.
And everybody's bad.
Few more months, but, you know.
Yeah.
It may not happen.
Yeah, no, absolutely. But you would prefer to have the option to do it yourself and make those decisions versus having the village do the work and then bill you for it on the backend essentially?
Well, at this cost.
Yeah, because I mean, we were, we were under the understanding that it was going to be
Completely. Okay.
Can we clarify that a little bit? Or am I reading that wrong, or is the twelve thousand six is the total amount, right?
Correct, that's the total amount.
The forty-eight ninety-five is theirs, and we pay the rest?
Uh, well, Jason, would you like to speak to that? I think part of it is the breakdown of some of the additional geography issues or topographic issues that require additional work to be done.
So I'm sorry, could you?
Well, they were talking about that their number would be twelve thousand dollars. That's the total amount, right? Not what they would pay necessarily?
Well, I, in so if, to me, you read the code, and all costs necessary to install a sidewalk conceivably could go up to twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars if the village were to do the work, assuming a contingency is used, assuming the culvert needs to be replaced. But those are what we deem are necessary to make, to install it correctly, is they have to replace the apron in order to achieve the ADA slope, as well as then install the sidewalk and then do the restoration to the turf around it. So that's staff's interpretation of all costs necessary. So I guess that's why the twelve thousand number is being thrown out as the cost to install the sidewalk that, per the code, is how we look at kind of that definition. No exclusions, I guess.
Is the sidewalk a standard cost? Is it a normal sidewalk that they're putting in?
Um, so it's cement. So I guess I would say the materials are standard.
I'm speaking about the elevation of the sidewalk.
Yeah, really, if you look at the breakdown, that's really where I believe that forty-eight hundred comes from, is simply a linear foot of concrete sidewalk based on our most recent concrete prices. You start to then introduce so I would say the sidewalk is
Sidewalk itself is a normal expense to them. There's nothing unique about the sidewalk, right? It meets the neighbor's sidewalk at the right elevation.
Yeah, there are no costs included in here that reflect any improvements to someone else's property. So the forty-eight, I think, is what
A normal sidewalk. And then the rest of this is apron and culvert, right?
That, that's kind of how we broke it down, and some engineering costs as well there for design.
Which we don't have an ordinance on culverts.
Uh, the, the replacement of a culvert is the private property owner's responsibility based on our village's practice when similar issues arise.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I, my other comment was, I, you know, for every single time we've had this meeting, and, you know, I, I have heard the five thousand dollar number come up, and I think that's an awful big jump to take to a homeowner and jump from five thousand to twelve thousand dollars. And it's just, it's, it's a very large number.
So would it be fair to say you'd be more in line with amending the ordinance to allow us to change the amount due and revisit this next week when we can both amend the ordinance and then approve the new contract?
I agree with that, yes.
Okay.
Lowering this.
Out of the two board members that worked on the ordinance, feel about that? You and Lee were, were part of the groups that worked on it, right?
No, I was, Lee and was it Patrick?
We were on the board, yeah.
Oh, we are on the board, yeah. Guilty. There's a smile.
So I mean, again, we had a lot of conversations about this issue, about the sidewalk issue, and, you know, it was all about the fairness. So there was a lot of issues back then, too. You know, one thing that we did was we, we required money upfront from people on a pre-annexation agreement before they even hooked up to utilities or become part of the village that we had to get the money right away. And if they never annexed in, we would just hold their money forever. So then that was a problem. And then that's what, that's why we came up with this, because we had a longstanding issue of people not fulfilling their end of the bargain. So if they had a contract to say, hey, we're going to put a sidewalk in, people just didn't do it. So we wanted to make sure that there was some more stronger teeth to the contract to make sure that they fulfilled their, the bargain. So, and then we went back and forth, and I think for this one, there was a little bit of confusion in terms of what our ordinance actually stated in terms of, was it the four thousand? Like, is that really the cost of the sidewalk, like the green items here, or is it really everything? I think that was the initial confusion. And then, so I think to David's point, in terms of getting a private contractor to do it, it'll probably be cheaper. But I think that's why, one of the reasons why, why I would want to continue it, because we want to make sure that, like, we have the best, you know, option for you guys, too, that could be potentially, you know, let's say, eight thousand or something like that, right? So I think that's one thing. And then, again, it's just about, like, fairness, too, treating everyone the same, treating everyone equal, because in fact, what happened was with the last time we did these pre-annexation agreements, where we netted out at the current policy, we had to offer anyone that gave us the money upfront, the ability to get their money back, because I think at the time, attorney Knippen was saying there's a potential for a lawsuit, because we're treating people unequally. So we had to give them the opportunity to say, hey, you could either keep your agreement as is, or we have to refund you. If they chose to not get refunded, then there, there would, there'd be no basis for them to file a suit, because they chose after the fact, we gave them the option, and so we refunded all the money. So that's what I think, that's where we were, like, netting out at the time. So
and Lee
Obviously, we could always revisit it and talk more about it and flush it out more. But I think that's like the, the critical thing to talk through.
And Lee, you're in agreement as far as about the continuation, but you would prefer to see it written in a way that they could, they're responsible for privately doing the work and not the village, in which case then there's no dollar amount associated with it. It's based on bidding, bidding at the time that the, that the resident accepts.
I'm okay with having that conversation. I mean, I think it's fine to give them the opportunity to have it done privately. So we could have, we could put an option and say, hey, if, if they were like, no, we don't want to, some people just don't want to have anything to do with the whole bidding process and construction. And so they might just say, hey, here's twelve grand. I don't want to deal, deal with this, right? And others might say, no, I want to go and, and kind of figure out, like, can I get it for six thousand? So to me, I think it's good to have the option, but I'm definitely open to hearing the counterpoint.
Okay. Toms and Wayne, I haven't gotten an opinion from you quite yet.
Oh, I could go along with that.
Okay.
I paid for my apron to be redone. It was about five thousand for the concrete, but I didn't have a culvert. So Mike, the only question I would ask about a culvert is then are they instructed as to what size pipe has to go in there and, and all of that?
Yeah, engineering would review that as part of a permit that they would need to submit and to ensure it's right-sized culvert and it's installed according to our code.
Well, it should benefit that the water would leave your property. That's a good thing.
Trustee Prokowsky, any thoughts on the matter?
Much as I hate to ask them to come back, do you think continuing this is probably the best move here?
And so knowing that that's kind of the tenure of the board on that regard, to make sure we have a productive and we can put this to bed at the next meeting, where do we want to see? I'm hearing different things as far as giving options, as far as we want to allow them to have their own private bid done, and they can fulfill that on their own without the village involvement besides engineering and reviewing it. I'm hearing, looking at this in terms of we have different parts of this project. We have the sidewalk, we have the required work that needs to be done for the apron, we have the required work for the calvert. So I'm hearing different opinions about what they would like to see, because we have to amend the ordinance in order to change this contract and to approve it essentially. So we need to be really in lockstep, making sure that we're comfortable with that, because otherwise, we could have a third continuance on our, our hands, and I don't want to do that to the residents by any means. So any, any, that's what I'm hearing right now, is that
It would be in agreement with Lee about giving him the option of finding a private, probably get better quotes than what we're providing. Some of that work could be done yourself, maybe with the landscaping or whatever. You know, a couple of sheets of grass from Menards or somewhere, roll them out and water them for a month. So I would be more like what Lee was mentioning.
Okay, so the options more so? Okay.
Now, can I ask a question on that? First staff, is that like an issue for you guys? If we gave the residents an option, whether the village did it or them doing it on their own, or do you see any?
Karen should be here shortly, but I don't know, to be honest, where exactly this would fit into a project that the village would let. If it could be part of our standards. Hi, ladies. Your help is needed.
Code, Jay, right? It has to be done to code.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just how we fit it into our workflow, and if we are leveraging an existing contract. So if the staffer have a preference between, if it were to be the village who installed the sidewalk versus the private property owner apart from price, more of just out of if we had a choice, price not being an option, but a consideration, but rather us versus them from a quality or?
You'd inspect it to make sure it was at the same quality as our contractor would do it. So from that aspect, no, we don't have a preference.
And would it be a separate contract, or do you see this being part of a bigger sidewalk project that we have to come this year yet, or?
It would probably have to be next year.
So I think regardless of whatever we do, I, I would say we should probably put a twelve-month timestamp on it, based on that feedback about where this would fall in terms of reasonability. I think six months right now would probably put this in a weird kind of limbo. So I'd say whatever we're bringing back next week, it would be my preference. I don't know if anyone has a different opinion on that, but just given seasonality and concrete work and what we would have done ourselves, I think, giving the resident, if we go down this route, an opportunity to have a year to complete the work would be fair, more fair than six months.
Do we have that in our current ordinance, though, like, language around that?
It talks about six months, and if unable to do it in six months, a performance bond is provided to the village, so that bridges the gap until they can then do it the following construction season.
Which in this case, though, would be based on our engineering, which would be a thirteen thousand dollar bond they'd have to put up, by my math, which I don't think the resident really wants, probably put up thirteen thousand dollars with us. So we really want to provide relief, I think. That would be something of consideration.
Yeah, no, for sure. I just wanted to get clarity.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So so is that where we're trending towards is giving this public first private installation option? We're not entertaining discounts or, or rather, instead of, I shouldn't say there were discount, evaluating the different components of this project and just looking at it from that lens? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, I think so. Because like I said, I think to Wayne's point earlier, too, you know, some of the stuff the homeowner can do themselves, like topsoil and seeding, like, if you, you know, we have in here, we have twenty-two hundred dollars just for that. So I mean, this is us, like, doing everything for you, you know. So there's some things in here that, you know, you might be able to do yourself. So, or like we said, I think everyone knows it'll be cheaper if you get a price as well. So.
Yes, Jason, I was just about to say, is that enough direction? Any question?
Yeah, I think only if the board wants to continue with this. I don't know if two weeks is going to be enough. Say they need time to get more than one quote. Contractors are very busy. If they get no one, that's all I would ask is which board meeting you want to consider, two weeks or a month? And upon certainly their availability and ability to obtain certain things, too.
So and I'm going to look to the attorney on this. I would almost rather, in this case, could we say indefinitely at this point, just to give us time to work with the residents, see what the market reacts to, so that we were not committed to one month and then having to do this whole rigamarie again, and that way we have some more flexibility? Is that a possibility in this case?
I would recommend that you close the public hearing.
Okay.
Because anytime that you continue, it has to be for a date certain
Okay.
To the next meeting.
Sure. So Jason, would you like to recap the conversation where we're at?
We started, Bruce, with kind of a little backstory, which you are aware of, with sidewalks, the board approving an ordinance establishing that when a property annexes, they shall install sidewalks, including all work necessary to make the area ready for the sidewalk installation. So that was kind of the conversation around who's responsible for what. And by code, they, as the property owner, would be responsible for installing They, as the property owner, would be responsible for installing the sidewalk, one. And then, two, we use an engineer's estimate in order to provide some estimated cost for doing the sidewalk. So there was some conversation around homeowner hires a private contractor versus the village hires a contractor. That's kind of a decision point for the board to make yet. Right now they're talking about continuing this for another meeting. For the private homeowner to get an estimate as they may feel that because ours is prevailing wage, it's a public works project, maybe a private. They could have a better cost that maybe is under a certain dollar amount. So as presented by. Staff is that engineer's estimate. We validated kind of the cost. We staff went back out there, looked at everything, looked at topography. The number stayed the same as the last meeting, which is kind of that all in number. In that spreadsheet, which was the 12,000. $612, which includes the contingency. We highlighted a staff, some costs that maybe won't be necessary, but that's to be determined in the field like the culvert. As well as the contingency may not be required. So kind of the conversation's been around initially. Just the concrete cement cost for the sidewalk, which is kind of that 14,000 or sorry, 4,800 number. Which is kind of that, what is in more or less the green in that spreadsheet on four of 20 in the attachment. You then get into the topsoil, the grading and shaping ditches, the driveway pavement removal and the other costs are then what added? Gets added on and gets up to that 11,400. So right now they're they're kind of at that point, the board has been discussing, kind of going back and forth on the appropriate next step in order to. Make a final decision around the terms of this annexation.
Would we like to go over the calvert policy that we've reviewed?
I, if I, am I mistaken that this $12,000 number was presented at the last meeting as well? Right? Yeah. So that that number was there. I think it's really the interpretation of the village's ordinance related to. The cost of all necessary to put a sidewalk in. And I think there's, right now, to me, the board is kind of debating that definition. What is all necessary cost for a sidewalk is them replacing their. Their driveway as well as the possibility of the culvert and doing some grading and ditching. Meet that definition in our code and I think there's some discussion right now by the board and in a. And that's kind of how we've gotten to that 12 number. I think there is a trustee who thinks. The cost to put in a sidewalk is whatever cost. Is determined by a contractor to put it in. We know our contractors' cost. That number may be way high. So I think that's why there was the conversation around, well, what would a non-public works project? What would that cost be? And certainly the homeowners, as they've said, staff has been giving them a number of 4,000, of 4,800 roughly. And that is some, you know, that is on us for kind of coming back with a higher number after spending more time and looking into it. Because that math was really a sidewalk of X linear feet at X price. Not taking a deeper dive into understanding the other extenuating circumstances that would make this project more costly.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. And you're welcome to join us at any point in time. As far as. As far as the comment, we did say we were going to start after seven. We did not say 7:30 specifically and our understanding was that you were not going to be able to make it tonight, so.
I I apologize for not texting you, Bruce. We couldn't connect to you because Zoom right now or YouTube is not working. I apologize that I was confused with how we left it. I thought you said you wouldn't be here. I know I was texting with Wayne. To get, you know, as he was looking to come in, asking if kind of the all clear was given, so I I apologize for that.
Can I propose something to the homeowners? You've already agreed basically the 4865 number, correct? And this is obviously more than anybody had sounded like realized the $12,000 amount. So that being said, would you do us a favor and get us some private quotes? And if we can get that $12,000 down, we can address that. If time to do that. Because that would help mitigate what we have to pay as well.
So on the, so we agree on continuation. I guess my concern is we're going to bring back an amendment to the current ordinance. And this could potentially cause further issues for us because I don't know if we have consensus on how we're going to implement that. So are we. Looking to amend this to allow for a private option versus a public option? Are we thinking about doing this to strictly discuss sidewalk costs and not any ancillary costs that may be incurred such as grading? Calvert or or other issues such as. The apron to be repaired to match the sidewalk. I just want to make sure. Yes, Lee?
Well, that goes to the, you know, to Bruce's point in terms of how to get to the 12,000. The way it got to the 12,000 is the sidewalk ordinance that we passed. A couple of years ago, when we had the issues with the pre-annexation agreements. I asked for clarification from Jason in terms of like, what did that ordinance say as it says on the books now? And it says all costs necessary for the sidewalk, which is 12,600. So the, and then we're talking now to say, okay, well. There's potential discussion on amending that ordinance before we do this annexation to figure out like, does. Do we, do we change it to let the homeowner do it, et cetera, so the cost gets less? Yeah, that's building code in Roselle, so that would be part of it. That's how, from my understanding is what the code says.
So I think what I'm going to recommend at this time, if there's consensus in it, then I'd ask for motion. I'd ask that we have a motion to continue this public hearing until September 27th, which would be our second meeting in September. Giving staff ample time. And I think what we should do is have a specific new business discussion on this because I don't think we're going to have consensus tonight on that. And we can start to weigh those options, understand it so that we have time to draft a proposal. Within a month and a half from now, that should hopefully meet not only this situation, but the bigger problem at hand. Does that feel good to? I'm going to look to Public Works and Jason real quick. Does that feel like ample time for that or is that ambitious?
I don't think it's ambitious if all you're looking for is. At that second meeting in September is a new business discussion item.
So before, sorry, but before that, so like for our next meeting, have a discussion on the like potential amendment options. Want to have this done for the 27th, but I think we need probably one or two discussions on this to make sure we have the right policy before we drag the residents back.
No, I think for a discussion for the board under new business at the next meeting is not difficult or ambitious. In order for staff and the village attorney to be have an open conversation around different ways to amend the ordinance. It'd probably be more of that, maybe some recommendations or looking at other codes, but it's if it's new business, that's not a problem.
Okay. Resident Berkshire.
Have the homeowners get a private quote because if they can get this done for, say, nine or $10,000. That mitigates what we have to pay. They would pay the same amount of the 4865 or whatever, and it would just be less that the village would have to pay. So you'd be helping us out.
I think it can allow for both. So I think that's a very good point. That way there's essentially a longer lead time period if you guys would like to get a quote. And we find that that is useful information from your end. I can't require you to. I'm not going to demand you do. But should you do that and you find that you find a more advantageous opportunity, that can also help us inform our decisions as well. So I think afterwards I talked to Karen and Kristen from Public Works, but it would be kind of, I would probably, the way I see it at least in this spreadsheet, we have it color coded. The green portion, I would honestly personally say suggest, just given I don't know where the discussion is going to go over the next couple of weeks. Get a quote for the green portion, which would be the sidewalks, just strict sidewalks. The white part I would. Define as remediation, so grading, topsoil, backfill. And then the yellow is more of the calvert and apron work. So I think they're they're compartmentalized in a good chunk. And that way I would encourage you to get a quote for all the work, but ask for it to be broken down in that way. If it's by the line item, even better. If not, I'd say green, white, yellow sections would be sufficient enough. So that way, depending on wherever this board goes, you have sufficient information to do whatever you need to do or at least inform decisions from this side. And they can probably recommend some places that you can at least talk to or at least get you in contact with somebody to get you started. That's also helped, so.
Thank you.
Right. Oh, trust me, I've been hunting down a couple of quotes still, so.
You can. We appreciate it.
And so, and I think my main intent, and I will go to you right away, trustee Donkey, is just that way, understand this is a hard job for you to come in. At least setting this out far enough in advance, you know, at least in a month and a half, we're going to be here to again. Hopefully that can help with planning, but then also we can get our act together. So that way, if you want to come for the debates, it will come in the future. It's not about your property specifically, about policy that can impact your property. By all means do, but you wouldn't be obligated to be here for those conversations is my intent so we can work through kind of end stage, if that makes sense. Thanks for being patient.
David, I just want to pretend that I'm the resident right now. I'm going to put in a sidewalk that has to meet my neighbor's sidewalk in height. Because I have to do that, does that make my driveway not ADA compliant? Because as as I see it, then we are forcing them to put the sidewalk in a certain place that adds a lot of cost to their job.
So it's the cross slope of their existing driveway exceeds the 2% that's allowed. So regardless of where that adjacent property falls, their apron does not meet the required slope.
Was the sidewalk on the neighbor's lot put at the right place for the rest of the block?
The costs that are associated with this are unimpacted by the grades of the adjacent property.
I didn't hear what she said.
The cost of the this quote has no bearing to the elevation of the adjacent property, so.
Didn't cause the driveway to be not ADA.
Correct.
Oh, their their apron exceeds the allowable.
And it's the apron's pitch that makes it not a, what would happen on my house on Prospect Street? For God's sakes, the sidewalk is four feet over the street. The pitch there is about 30 degrees. I mean, I could never make that ADA compliant.
The sidewalk likely is compliant. The whole apron does not be compliant. You have to put a five foot section of sidewalk at 2% across the apron. And then the apron can go back steeper.
I could never make the apron less than 30 degrees over at Prospect Street.
And it's not about, it's not a concern about the apron. It's about what is considered the travel, the travel path across the driveway.
Across the driveway. Oh, okay, okay.
So is there, would someone like, I I entertained a motion, would someone like to make a motion to continue this public hearing until a date certain of Monday, September 27th? Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
I, any debate on that? I had to ask. All those in favor, we need to do a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Trustee Delapena.
Aye.
Trustee Domke.
Aye.
Trustee Lee, Lenisa. Aye, trustee Prokowsky.
Aye.
That motion passes. So we will continue your annexation conversation on Monday, September 27th. And then at our next meeting, staff will provide an item for discussion and information. To discuss policy amendments and whatnot, so. Trustee Trejo, let's make a quick.
Statement. I just wanted to let you guys know. I know it's super frustrating to deal with all of this, but. From our, or at least from my perspective, I just want to make sure that we have a good policy in place to treat everyone as fair as possible. And I think ever since we passed this, I don't know if you knew, but like three years ago, we were on CBS News for all these annexation agreements and stuff. We came up with a policy, we passed it. And that's what we're trying to follow now. And I think to the mayor's point and credit, we're trying to like reopen that up to kind of maybe fine tune it based on the scenario. So it's really to try to get not only fairness to you, but fairness to everybody else that's coming with potential annexation agreements in the in the future. So I know sometimes with government, it's frustrating. It's kind of convoluted and you know, it's like a spinning tunnel, but I just wanted to make that statement.
And I think. And it's been raised in in different fashions tonight, but I think your situation allude, it shone, shone a light on terms of the shortcoming that we have on this process. And so you always easily had an emergency situation. And we need to tighten up our staff protocol and procedure on that, just to make sure that we are following things to a T, have proper disclosure. And there's no uncertain things because to see things change like that is very dramatically different. And I think we need to just find a better way to to follow our own policy and and make sure that there's the right disclosures up front. So appreciate your patience with us, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have nothing else. The other items on community development are all related to this one, so we will continue on with our agenda. We have nothing under administration, nothing under fire, nothing under police or public works, and we'll go to finance. Trustee Lenisa.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable list for August 9th of 2021 in the amount of $871,962.97.
Do I have a second? Oh, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 No abstain.
All those oppose, and we have trustee Donkey abstaining. That motion passes. Move to new business. We have another opportunity for village board public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment on top of carnage and item may address the village board during public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, and I will ask again, madam clerk, do we receive any electronically?
No, we did not.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our first item, the TIF budget amendment. Ryan, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay through the mask?
Yes, and let the record show trustee Berkshire joined us.
So since April, when the board passed the TIF incentive program, staff has been receiving through our marketing efforts. A lot of positive feedback, but mostly inquiries have been coming from our downtown center. For the East Irving Park Road TIF district. So based on that demand, what you have in front of you is a consideration to make a budget amendment to increase the original 50,000. That's budgeted for each of the three TIF districts for this incentive program. To increase that by $80,000 for a total of $130,000. And this is primarily based on the demand for town center projects that we believe will be completed. And this is primarily based on the demand for town center projects that we believe will be completed this fiscal year. So that's a gist of it. That's what my memo states. If there's any questions, I can, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Trustee Berkshire.
Yes, I, I know when we have the TIFs, a lot of times we have to engage like the other taxing bodies, the library, high schools, et cetera. Do we have to do anything like that for something like this?
No.
And in fact, I'll say we had our annual meeting just two weeks ago, and we did highlight the work that we were doing. And the groups were very, because we had three different TIF boards meet. They're all very receptive and very, I would say positive about the work we've been doing with the grant program. So. Any other questions for Brian? So I will just confirm, we've got concurrent from the board to increase the budget from 50,000 to $130,000 for the East Irving Park Road TIF grant program. All right, that's your direction. So we'll now move on to our second item, the 2017 FDA food code.
So the memo that you have in front of you kind of highlights the services that the village provides, mainly for the Cook County portion of the village in terms of food establishments. So we have a contracted health official that provides routine and periodic inspections for all food establishments within Cook County. He also provides plan reviews for new food establishments coming into town. And then he also responds to certain concerns, much like we received a couple during COVID. As far as the DuPage portion of the village, DuPage County Health Department handles the same similar services. And then in an overarching standpoint, we do provide grease trap inspections for all food establishment services, establishments in the village, not dependent on the county. So what this recommendation pretty much says is that the state and surrounding communities, including DuPage County, follow the newest form of the FDA food code, primarily for procedures and standards that govern and regulate preparation and storage of food, as well as best practices for staff and oversight for food related operations. So what we currently do for inspection services is we already model after this informally. It's just not written and codified in our municipal code. So by adopting this code, it matches our current inspectional services, that which is done by the county in DuPage, but also what's already being done by our contracted health officer in Cook County. So it's a more unified approach. It matches our inspection form that's attached to my memo. And it just also reiterates any local amendments that would need to be made can now be just attached to a simple codified version that models after the FDA code. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So by codifying the 2017 food code, if they change that, do we have to rewrite the code?
No. No, we can write within, within that section of the code that any amendments thereafter would be amended.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions on the board?
When they, when they have to follow our code, are restaurants given a break on their insurance? Because we have a stricter code maybe than other towns or is there any proof of that? Nothing?
Not that I know of. I could look into that, but I don't.
We don't think.
And it's not that this is more strict. It's really following state law that's already in place. So.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense doing this.
Thank you. Trustee Berkshire.
You answered my question, but I wanted to just double check. So therefore we won't hit, because it's a state, therefore we don't have to worry about any type of grandfathering or any kind of timeline in which people have to, to become compliant, should they not be? Because they should already be compliant.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
It's nice that he looks into this. This is a good opportunity for us to link up.
Absolutely. So everyone's direction, move forward. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Continuing with our agenda, is there any other business that the board would like to discuss tonight? Seeing none, we do not have any executive session for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You want to oppose nay? Any abstentions? We'll adjourn at 8:15. Thank you.